I'd like to call the January seventh meeting of the Gloucester County Board of Supervisors to order. Ms. Steele, will you call the role?
Yes, Mr. Bizani.
Here.
Mr. Crisco.
Here.
Mr. Gibson.
Here.
Mr. Hudson.
Here.
Mr. Nikosia.
Here.
Dr. Orth.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
All present.
All right, we all join me with the invocation of Reverend Pat, geez, Reverend Jack Smith, New Life Ministry Center. How about Ralph one?
Evening. Lord, we thank you tonight for all that you've done for us. We thank you for this new year you're bringing us into. I pray God tonight to put your hand upon every one of these supervisors, Lord. Each one that are here tonight, I pray God to minister before us. Lord, give us the discernment that we need and the wisdom that we need to make the right decisions. I pray God to bless this county, anoint this county, oh God, that we will come before you. We praise you and thank you tonight for all you're doing in the holy name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Will you now all welcome Petsworth fifth grader Elizabeth Morris, or as her friends call her Libby, for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Libby?
Libby.
Would you like to sit in my chair?
Thank you, Libby.
Those eyes. Ms. Steele, will you do election of board officers for 2025?
Thank you. As the first order of business, the board will elect a chair for 2025. Nominations do not require a second, and in the event of multiple nominees, the votes will be undertaken in the order of nomination with the first to achieve majority support declared chair. At this time, the floor is open for nominations for chair.
Ms. Steele, I'd like to nominate Mr. Kevin Smith as chair.
If there are no other nominations, at this time, the floor is closed for nominations. I will now poll the board for the adoption of the resolution appointing Mr. Kevin Smith as chair. Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Nikosia?
Yes.
Dr. Orth? Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Bizani?
Yes.
You select a chair. As the next order of business, the board will elect a vice chair for 2025. Nominations do not require a second, and in the event of multiple nominees, the votes will be undertaken in the order of nomination with the first to achieve majority support declared vice chair. At this time, the floor is open for nominations for vice chair.
I would like to nominate the honorable Mr. Ashley Crisco as vice chair.
If there are no other nominations at this time, the floor is closed for nominations. I'll now poll the board for the adoption of the resolution appointing Mr. Ashley Crisco as vice chair. Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Nikosia?
Yes.
Dr. Orth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Bizani?
Yes.
And Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
And he is elected. Congratulations to both the chair and the vice chair.
Once again, thank you, gentlemen. Okay, as we move on with our agenda, we'll have the approval of the minutes for September the seventeenth, October the first. We don't want any mistake here, huh?
Thank you, Mr. Wilmot.
October the fifteenth, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Moved to second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Next on the agenda is adoption of...
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Before we do the adoption, I've got to make an amendment to the agenda.
Yes, sir.
At your place, gentlemen, there is a resolution to confirm and consent to the declaration of local emergency that we put in over the weekend. I have not entered a end date due to the impending weather for this weekend, so we will keep that going, and then we will add the end date to a consent agenda item in the future. But I would like to add this to the last item just before, we'll do it just before board appointments, so it'll be, it'll be the new F and board appointments will become G, and I'll make the motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved to second. Got a question? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is the approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next matter presented by the board. Thank you.
Just one quick thing, Mr. Chair. I'd like to thank the board for the support to be vice chair and get to work with Mr. Smith, and we're looking forward to a good, successful year, and thank you all again for the support.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Chair? Yes, I also want to congratulate Vice Chair Crisco and Chairman Smith on your election and look forward to a productive year, and also just wanted to mention former chairman Chris Hudson, who led our board for two years. Being a chair, I have not fulfilled that role, but I imagine it's a very time-consuming effort to lead the board, additional time that you have to put in to plan for the meetings, and Chris did an outstanding job, and just wanted to express my appreciation. I'm sure the board shares that for his leadership over the past two years.
Yes, sir.
I'll second it.
Okay. Yes, sir.
I just wanted to thank the staff and board for the last two years and congratulate Mr. Crisco and Mr. Smith on the upcoming year. Good luck, have fun.
Thanks, sir. Okay, anymore?
And one more thing, I'd like to lend my support, do whatever I can to work with Mr. Smith and Mr. Crisco in what will prove to be a very interesting year ahead of us.
And I'll repeat that sentiment as well. Congratulations to you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, next is county administrator items.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. Thank you. I have three matters. The first is, I would like to say a thank you and a shout out to our facilities team and others who helped get us through the office preparation and a whole lot of rock salt going out and making sure that customers and citizens coming in were not slipping and sliding all over the place, and also for the emergency management team that stayed in contact with each other throughout the whole thing. Secondly, I did not send a weekly report on Friday, but there was one item that I could have, and I just thought I would share it tonight instead, and that is to give you an update that Katie Legg, Ms. Legg, the Director of Utilities, let us know that they successfully obligated all ARPA funds by 1231, which was required. She wanted to thank the finance and purchasing team because it was a lot that had to be done quickly to make sure everything could be put down by that date, and the list of what they're able to accomplish that's either in hand or committed is quite extensive, and also thanks to the county attorney who made sure that all these purchases could be done legally. So the crash truck, that's a big one, fully outfitted and road-ready, complete with barrels, cones, and rumble strips. Pump station fourteen, the pipes and control panel upgrades, the water treatment plant, raw water pump three replacement, Gloucester Point Tower water age management system so that the water is circulating, we're not having to waste it, the SCADA improvements, the hydrant replacement, slope mower and attachments, the RO Skid number one membrane replacement, and pump station eleven design. So that's quite a lot that was done with the ARPA funds and great progress there. And the third thing that I have is the board is aware that there's been a number of correspondence from the county attorney and also myself about the situation that a citizen raised who would like to put a house in a B, Business One District, a B1 location, and I think the board's aware that there is a solution, and the county attorney has suggested that this is legal and can be done. So if there's a consensus by the board that you would like to send this back down to the planning commission, and I'll let the attorney weigh in of whether we need to do an actual resolution or a consensus is good, because it does need to go back to the planning commission and really start over there, and that's when public comment would be allowed and things. So that's why it's not formally on the agenda at this point. So we're prepared to start that process with the planning commission if the board desires. Are we okay with a, I mean with a nod?
Yes.
It probably should be a resolution.
And the resolution should be to the effect to move to send to the planning commission consideration of an ordinance amendment which would allow replacement of residential structures in the manufactured homes and trailers, mobile homes in the B1 district with other residential structures. So something to that effect. So there should be a resolution to send it to the planning commission to try and figure that out.
Moved to second. Anyone questions, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
That was all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is scheduled presentation. We have a presentation of the FY24 audit to unaudited financial results, Ms. Maria Callaway.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We're gonna give a PowerPoint that is brief. Oh, I should probably find the, here we go. All right, so this evening, I'll be presenting a brief overview of the audited fiscal year 2024 financial results and how those results compared to the unaudited presentation I gave back in October. You'll notice that a majority of this focus is on some changes that happened in the school fund, which then impact the general fund. So I'm here to try to, as best as possible, explain those impacts on the general fund, and Dr. Vladu is here as well to help answer any specific questions you may have on the school financials. So the main audit change that we had this year was a decrease in school, state, and federal revenue. And the way that this impacts the county is that the county transfer then needs to increase to offset that lower revenue. I do want to highlight here that the schools did not overspend their total budget, but it does impact the county transfer to the schools. So what changed? So on this slide, you can see the budget and the actual results in those first two columns, and originally, my presentation in October, I expected that we were going to be receiving $502,000 in appropriations back to the general fund at the end of fiscal year 24. The ending result ended up being that the county transfer had to go over budget by $160,000 to cover, like I just mentioned, those reductions in federal and state revenue. So this slide shows a little bit of a different view of the same idea. So based on the information that I had in September when I was preparing that unaudited presentation, I looked at what had the schools spent, and that's that first row, the 76 million, and that is within their budget, which you'll see in the next slide. And then at that point, we had state and federal revenues of 40 million and 5.9 million. And then, as you can see, the next column over that middle column that says audited, those reductions in federal and state revenue then yielded the county to have to increase that contribution. So that bottom bolded line where I originally presented 29.9 million is what the county transfer to the schools would be. The ending audited transfer was 30.584 million. So in total, this is, again, another representation of the same numbers. I wanted to show the budgeted numbers. So the school's budget was in total 77.1 million, and the spending was 76 million, so 1.1 million under budget on spending. However, in that bottom section where it says revenues, the federal, state, and local other revenues other than that county contribution were 1.26 under budget. So a little, 160,000 was that difference. So the biggest concern here is the impact on unassigned fund balance, as I mentioned originally, that my goal here is to try to explain the impact there. I presented in October that we would have unaudited fund balance of $28,999,000. The audited unassigned fund balance figure is 28.3 million, and about 99% of it is that 663,000. Here's the unassigned fund balance chart you're used to seeing. So at the bottom there, you have that 3.294 million. That is what we are working with as far as excess above our 16% policy maximum, and that is a change from the 4 million that I provided in October. So that concludes the presentation. I'll be back in February to provide a mid-year financial update, really before we get into the meat of budget season, and then we'll be finishing up the fiscal year and going right back into it again. Happy to answer any questions. Yes, sir.
Thanks, Ms. Callaway. Is there any specific reason why the difference occurred in federal and state revenue? I know you gave the numbers, but what specific reason led to that difference between our numbers and the numbers from coming from the state and feds?
So from, again, I may need to defer to Dr. Vladu. What I can explain from a technical standpoint is that when the auditors came in, some of the reimbursement requests that had been recorded in the original unaudited results, the auditors found were not able to be recorded for that fiscal year, for either they were pertaining to another fiscal year, or they were perhaps estimates that did not belong with fiscal year 24. Is that good for you?
Had nothing to do with our daily membership, was it?
First, I want to congratulate Mr. Smith and Mr. Crisco on your appointment. Happy new year, everyone. And before I start, I just want to thank you for your support of public education. We have a phenomenal system, but it takes money to educate kids. I'm glad you hit the ADM. We're struggling with that, so when the budgets are projected every year, you're looking, we anticipate this many students coming in. And so then, we get funded both federally and from the state, which considers a large chunk. When we don't hit enrollment, that does get affected every year. So one of the things we're going to have to do is monitor a little more closely. And so, for instance, we received over 90 requests from homeschooling. Those are changes in the middle of the year, and funds that we lose both federally and from the state, students with disabilities, IEPs, and a number of other factors. So that's one factor. The other factor would be, as Maria has shared, these ester funds, the largest injection of federal funds in a generation, we had to cut $3.1 million, 24 positions, to bring a conservative budget, plus a reduction of three elementary positions. All of those happened last year in order to be able to crunch the numbers. So we're monitoring extremely closely. These numbers will fluctuate. We're educating our folks on being more precise with middle-of-the-year changes in enrollment, because they do drive everything. Enrollment drives school funding. So thank you for that question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Callaway. Stay close by. Okay, next is citizen comment period. I would like to address the board.
I don't want to make a citizen's comment, but I neglected to mention to Ms. Steele that tonight we have our new engineering services director here. If you wanted to introduce him.
Brian Lewis, if you would please stand up and thank you, Mr. Green.
Sorry.
Brian Lewis, I'm returning to the county.
Yeah, you gotta use that microphone. You should know, you should know the routine by now.
I won't even comment. Yes, I do. I'm Brian Lewis. I'm returning to the county. I was here back in the early 2010 issue, so I definitely look forward to working with all of you and, you know, on behalf of our residents, and, you know, call me anytime you need something. Be glad to help, so.
Glad to have you back.
Very happy to have him on board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Lewis. Okay. All right, once again, citizen comment period. Anyone like to address the board? Okay, Ms. Cronin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had two comments submitted from Kenneth Hogg Senior in Gloucester Point. As we bring in the new year and discuss the 2026 budget, I encourage you to take a long, hard look at the condition of our water and sewer infrastructure. I have been following our utilities department since 2012 and served for a short time on the utilities advisory committee. Thirteen years later, we see our water and sewer systems continue to degrade only to be shored up with nothing more than Band-Aid fixes. Expansion of these systems is necessary for utilities to become a self-sustaining enterprise department, but expansion has been minuscule at best. What is even worse, tens of millions of dollars are needed to repair, replace, and modernize the current systems before any significant expansion can occur. Utilities is in its current state because of mismanagement on multiple levels and because, just like many of their predecessors, our board of supervisors and county administration places a higher priority on funding things like parks, recreation, tourism, and community engagement than they do on maintaining and expanding our water and sewer systems to the level where utilities truly has a chance to become a self-sustaining, money-making enterprise. Several years ago, the initial debt to create our current water system was satisfied. Throughout that debt cycle, the county found it necessary to fund approximately 600,000 of the debt annually. Once the debt was satisfied, the county found other things to spend that money on instead of continuing to invest in utilities, water, and sewer systems. Prior boards and administrations levied meals and lodging taxes to fund parks, recreation, tourism, community engagement, and other expenditures, yet not one penny from overall tax collections is invested to provide quality drinking water and reliable sewer collection throughout the county. Expanding public water and sewer availability will significantly enhance economic and residential growth, but such growth will not happen until a board of supervisors starts investing in our water and sewer infrastructure and starts running utilities like the enterprise business venture that it is. As a start, consider following James City County's example and self-appoint the entire board of supervisors to be the new utilities advisory committee and do away with the current committee. Then maybe the board will gain a better understanding of what is involved in operating and maintaining the systems necessary to provide public water and sewer to thousands of people daily and the extreme risks and liabilities associated with doing so. On another note, please explain why the county administrator's pay has increased by over $30,000 in three years and has now asked for more health care compensation. The costs for this administrator appear to far outweigh the benefit of her employment. No county administrator in a place as small as Gloucester County is worth that level of compensation enhancement. From Howard Maury, York District, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Ms. Steele and Mr. Wilmot. At the last meeting, Ms. Legg, Director of Public Utilities, provided you a nice picture or painted landscape of the conditions and workings of the utility. As I listened in my easy chair, she forced me to go digging in the weeds, thus the following findings and all is not complete, plus some serious recommendations and findings do follow. I bought a county map defining the water and sewer lines. There are approximately 6,340 parcels where the lines, one or the other or both, pass along the front edge of these properties. There are approximately 5,200 water customers and around 1,900 sewer accounts. One needs to know this is, and this is an enterprise fund, a business system. A pay-as-you-go for profit to maintain the upkeep and improve upon the system through billing and budget process. As a board, you have failed over time to maintain this process. Usage may vary month-to-month, but the November 24 billing noted 2,516 accounts were billed the minimum charge. This includes up to 2,000 gallons of water. How many of these accounts reflected zero water usage? What procedures are in place identifying and replacing these faulty meters that show zero usage month after month? That suggests 2,684 customers were billed for usage above 2,000 gallons a month. That suggests a lot of customers' meters are not registering usage. Also, there are around 1,900 sewer accounts. It was reported that 853 customers were connected to the county water service. That reveals a shortage of 1,047 accounts not connected to the county water system. How do you, the county meter those 1,047 accounts for billing? The utility department has no records identifying the number of accounts in the sanitary districts or outside of those districts. Additionally, the GIS mapping cannot identify those lines either. The question is, had they been eliminated? Do we have districts, or have you merged with the Hampton Road sanitation system except for the providing water to the customers? If this be the case, there are some corrections to our ordinances that may not have been made public. Recommendations: A, eliminate the current utilities committee and replace with all new citizens. B, have a public forum to discuss this public facility and its future. C, have more than one board member present at each monthly meeting to observe and comment on proceedings since they provide the funding and debt processes. D, borrow monies after complete review to upgrade the infrastructure and add new services by placing a lien on each parcel of land and require mandatory hookup to water and sewer. The monthly billing will follow the deed, not the owner, at time of sale or transfer until lien is satisfied. Also, state code 15.2-2110 could be applied as outlined in Part A of the state code. In conclusion, I find this department business financially bankrupt even though the budget is balanced each year by law. The system is only operating as a medical Band-Aid situation. Those are all the comments received, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Cronin. Okay, next on the agenda, we have no public hearings tonight, so our regular agenda. Ms. Callaway, request for additional FY25, 2025 carryover appropriations?
Yes, hello again. Oh, you're welcome to go. I think that's who you tried. Now they're gonna be like, you just sit here. I thought he was telling me to go. I was like...
We knew you didn't misunderstand.
Take care, great job.
She was getting ready to leave too, weren't you?
Yeah. One more, one more little.
I think she had missed his calling.
All right, well, this evening, I'm going to be, tonight I'm presenting a request for additional fiscal year 2025 appropriations. As you know, we do this, we first do appropriations for carryovers in August, and then, once the audit's complete, we come back and say, kind of even whatever out from audit adjustments. So the first one is $23,000, carryover of unspent appropriations for the comprehensive plan, and then the second is $19,421, and this is actually not a carryover, it's a request to transfer unassigned fund balance to the capital fund to cover overages of two projects. Those two projects are the school bus replacement program and the school project contingency, and that was initially state construction dollars that were provided straight to the schools, and all of those dollars were spent, and then an additional 86.26. And then, lastly, there are five carryovers, one being for the school security door system that's being moved into this fiscal year, a budget reduction in the school security improvements, and this is just aligning with the spending from last year. So we carried over a little too much. We're reducing that budget to align. $276,000 carryover of the broadband funds, and that's the cable fund balance portion, so that's the county portion. $156,000 of unspent historic building preservation funds, and that's funded with tourism fund balance. And lastly, a reduction of $23,679 in the building for renovation, and that's, again, to align with what was spent last year and the remaining project budget. Happy to answer any questions. There is a resolution on page 65.
Second.
Moved in second. Ms. Steele?
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Nikosia?
Yes.
Dr. Orth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Bizani?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Callaway. Next on the agenda is discussion and approval of the resolution to adopt Boards 2025 Rules of Procedure, Code of Ethics, and Standard of Conduct. Ms. Steele?
Yes, as the organizational meeting, this is the time that the board normally adopts Yes, as the organizational meeting, this is the time that the board normally adopts these policies. And we've had requests for edits that you all wanted to see made, and there was still only the one dealing with changing from citizen comment to public comment, and no other suggestions were received. So the documents are here for your approval. Part of what you are, if you approve them as they are, it's required, is that the Code of Ethics be read annually, and I'll be glad to do that after approval, unless somebody else would like to read them.
We'll read.
Do you, if, once they're adopted, if you...
I'll make the motion to approve with the one change.
Second. It's been moved in second. Any further discussion?
This is for, let me just make sure it's...
The change of, from citizen to public throughout the document.
So this includes the rules of procedure, your code of ethics, and your standards of conduct, all being adopted as usual.
Well, it's not, it's not just citizen to public, because some of it's citizen to person, but as the change that's presented in the package.
Yes.
Thank you for that clarification.
But I'll make the motion to approve as presented in the document with all the requisite changes.
Hey, moved in second. Any further discussion?
Okay.
All in favor?
We need to vote on this.
Roll call vote.
Okay, roll call. Okay, roll call.
Okay, Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Nikosia?
Yes.
Dr. Orth?
Yes.
Mr. Bizani?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
And Mr. Nikosia? Okay, motion carries.
Mr. Smith, yes.
Mr. Smith, you already called me one.
Ah, I thought that was, yes, okay.
Uh-huh. That's okay.
I think, I was going to say, what's next is, I think, the hardest part of the meeting, so I'm glad there was a mess-up on that, to make up before I have to read a long document.
It's the alphabetical order.
Just to test to see if I knew who I was.
It's the alphabetical order. She hadn't had to do it in alphabetical order in so long. Or when she started, made twice, I'm like, what?
Would you like me to proceed with reading this?
Yes.
Okay, so this is the Code of Ethics, Gloucester County Board of Supervisors. "Recognizing that persons who hold public office have been given a public trust and that the stewardship of such office demands the highest levels of ethical and moral conduct, members of the Gloucester County Board of Supervisors agree to adhere to the following Code of Ethics. Number one, uphold the Constitution, laws, and regulations of the United States and all the governments therein, and never knowingly be a party to their evasion. Two, put loyalty to the highest moral principles and to the county above loyalty to individuals or particular groups. Three, give a full measure of effort and service to the position of trust for which stewardship has been granted, giving earnest effort and best thought to the performance of duties. Four, seek to find and use the most equitable, efficient, effective, and economical means for getting tasks accomplished. Five, adopt policies and programs that support the rights and recognize the needs of all citizens regardless of race, sex, age, religion, creed, country of origin, or disability. Six, avoid speech, policies, programs, or activities that discriminate against or offend individuals because of race, sex, age, religion, creed, country of origin, or disability. Seven, ensure the integrity of the actions of the Board of Supervisors by avoiding the dispensing of special favors or unfair privileges to anyone, whether for remuneration or not. A member should never accept for himself or herself or for the family members of friends, for the family members or friends, favors or benefits that might be construed by reasonable persons as influencing the performance of governmental duties. Eight, make no private promises of any kind binding upon the duties of any office, since a public service has no private word that can be binding on public duty. Nine, engage in no business with the county government or the school system, either directly or indirectly, which is inconsistent with the conscientious performance of governmental duties. Ten, never use information gained confidentially in the performance of governmental duties as a means of making a private profit. Eleven, when any misconduct, neglect of duty, or corruption is discovered, the members of the board, as a body, will pursue and respond appropriately. Twelve, adhere to the principles that the public's business should be conducted in the public view by observing and following the letter and spirit of the Freedom of Information Act. Use closed meetings only to deal with sensitive personnel, legal, or contractual matters as provided by the Code of Virginia. Thirteen, avoid criticizing colleagues or citizens by impugning their integrity or vilifying their personal beliefs. Fourteen, make sure, when responding to the media, that a clear distinction is made between personal opinion or belief and the position of the board. Fifteen, review orally and in public session at the annual meeting each of these principles. Sixteen, pledge to honor and uphold these principles, ever conscious that public office is a public trust."
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Steele. Do we have to do anything with that? Motion?
We already voted on it.
We already voted on it? That's what we voted on? Thank you, Ms. Steele. Okay. Oh, yeah. Moving down. Next, on the agenda, is discussion and adoption of 2025 board meeting schedule. Ms. Steele?
Yes, you all have already adopted the budget schedule, and this is the remaining proposed schedule, and it's been cleared with the joint meetings and everything, as previously discussed and as usually held, so it's there for your consideration.
Motion to approve as presented. Second. First, moved in second. Any more discussion? Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor? All right, okay.
Need a roll call vote.
Roll call vote.
I believe so.
Be ready.
And I don't see any duplication. Mr. Nikosia?
Yes.
Dr. Orth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Bizani?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Okay, calendars passed. Thank you.
Okay. Next, this, Mr. Crisco, is this where you wanted to?
No.
That's not where you wanted to? Okay. Okay, all right. Next on the agenda is a discussion and approval of the 2025 Board Commission, Committee and Commissions. Okay, first of all, I will read the, I'm not going to read the resolution, we're not going to read the resolution or vote on the resolution until after I read all of the appointments. Okay. First of all, it's the Board of Social Services, Mr. Crisco, Hampton Roads Planning District Commission, Mr. Bizani, Hampton Roads Transportation and Planning Organization, Mr. Bizani and Mr. Hudson, Hampton Roads Military and Federal Facilities Alliance, Mr. Bizani, Library Board of Trustees, Dr. Orth, Middle Peninsula Alliance, Mr. Crisco, Middle Peninsula Planning District Commission, Mr. Crisco and Mr. Nikosia, and then the Planning Commission, Mr. Hudson, and the Northern Neck Regional Jail Board, Mr. Smith and Mr. Gibson, as alternate. And now, we can, the resolution, which has...
Make a motion to approve as Mr. Smith has presented.
Second. These are done later. They're all done. Okay. Next is the appointment by the chair. Okay, the Clean Green Advisory Committee, Dr. Orth, the Community Policy and Management Team, Mr. Crisco, Economic Development Authority, Dr. Orth, Historical Committee, Mr. Gibson, Local Emergency Planning Committee, Mr. Crisco and Mr. Nikosia, Middle Peninsula, Chesapeake Bay Public Access Authority, Mr. Crisco and Mr. Hudson, Peninsula Community Criminal Justice Boards, myself, Mr. Smith, Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, Mr. Gibson, Utility Advisory Committee, Dr. Orth, and Tourism Committee is Mr. Gibson. Okay.
We have the motion in the second for the resolutions.
Yes.
We need to vote on those.
Yes.
Ready? Dr. Orth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Bizani?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
And Mr. Nikosia?
Yes.
Motion carries. And if I can, Mr. Chair, I'll add the county administrator's appointments for those committees. And for community use of school facilities, it would be Mr. Smith and Mr. Hudson. The Flood Plane Management Planning Committee, Mr. Crisco. The Hazard Mitigation Management Team, Mr. Smith. And then the Local Transportation Planning Advisory Committee, Mr. Hudson and Dr. Orth.
Okay.
I appreciate your assistance with those committees as well.
Okay, thank you. All the board members. Okay, next, approval of FY26 travel amount to be budgeted for each board member. Ms. Carl Steele.
So...
Next, after this.
After that.
We do not have an FY26 budget yet, obviously, but this is to propose that the funds would be split in one-seventh, so it would be divided equally when they are adopted.
Okay.
And I believe there's a motion for your consideration of that.
Second.
Please, second. Any further discussion? So, have a budget.
Okay.
Hold board?
Mr. Bizani?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Nikosia?
Yes.
Dr. Orth?
Yes.
And Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, all right. Mr. Crisco?
Gentlemen, at your place, there's a resolution to confirm and consent to the Declaration of Local Emergency. We set up a local emergency this past Sunday in, leading up to the storm event that we had for Sunday night and Monday and Monday evening. The governor has his state of emergency set for 30 days. Ours won't last that long, but I would like to have the end date be proposed after we get through the events Friday and Saturday that are being forecasted at the moment. But we have to have this as a resolution, and I wanted to get that done tonight so that we can help do this. We will, this will, opens up some opportunity, if things were to get really bad this weekend, for us to seek extra resources if needed. So it's good to have in our hip pocket, and we have been declaring our local emergencies. We didn't declare many at first, but pretty much now, every time the governor declares and we're covered in it, we're going to declare a local emergency just to have the ability to pull the levers that need to be pulled if needed. So with that, there is a resolution, and I'll make the motion to approve.
Moved in second. Any other discussion? No other discussion?
Okay. Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Nikosia?
Yes.
Dr. Orth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Bizani?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Crisco.
Thank you all.
Okay. Next is board appointments.
Mr. Chair, if I may address the appointment to the Board of Social Services. We are very fortunate to have two extremely well-qualified applicants for this position. Makes my job and the board's job very difficult. I've spoken with both of these folks, and I've gotten some input from the Department of Social Services, and both are completely qualified and ready to go and would do a great job. Ms. Benz has a long and distinguished career in the federal government as a federal probation officer. Mr. Core has a long and distinguished career in law enforcement and in the U.S. military. So both are very well-qualified. In looking at both candidates, I think the only distinguishing factor is that Ms. Benz has served before on the Board of Social Services, and Mr. Core has not. And so to afford him that opportunity, I would nominate Bruce Core for a position on the Board of Social Services.
Move in second. Yes, but second. Any further discussion? No further discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Okay. Is that the only one we have?
We have another one.
Yes, sir.
We'll have to try to find somebody.
Yes. No one listed on the back? No, sir. Okay. Next is our Attorney Attorney Items.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Congratulations, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
On being elected, and Mr. Vice Chair, Mr. Crisco. Thank you very much, Mr. Hudson. You've been fantastic to work for and with, and I hope the wedding went well. You can still have something in your checking account.
That is a story for another day.[1745.13]